Seven o'clock. I've got a meeting to order. Would you like to do the roll call?
Sure.
Dan? And I got Don? Here. Sue is not here. Chris?
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
And Lori?
Here.
Okay. Did everybody get a chance to look at the agenda?
Sue's absent.
Right, Sue's not here. But did you talk to her today?
No, I didn't talk to her.
I talked to her.
Right, because I just found out that she had this.
She sent it to me?
Yeah.
Yep. So I printed it out for everybody so that we had it. Okay, um, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Did everybody get a chance to look at it?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
Dan? Matt, second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna go right into old business, streetscape. Just so that you know, Sue talked to Keith today. And he said that we can send them the estimates and they'll use that rather than us having to pay for that first. And that, he said that he'll accept the estimates that we have.
Okay.
So that we don't have to pay it and then possibly do another check.
Okay, so we've got, we've got everything here. We need to just, all the electrical things are here. We need, and the cement estimate. What we need to discuss is the ADA compliant mats that we were talking about replacing.
Yep.
And those, um, we have an option. There's, um... The cast-in-place replacement, the replaceables. You have to take the concrete out and put new concrete in with it. Now, what we have is the, and those are 165 apiece, which is what I said before. Well, when I talked to this different guy, he said, "Well, you can do a retrofit." And those, you don't have to replace the concrete. You just put them on top and glue them and screw them in. So, and I think that's what we got because it said the replaceable, the, excuse me. The cast-in-place are level with the surface and ours aren't.
They're raised up a little bit.
Ours are elevated. The advantage of the, of the cast-in-place is when you blow snow and stuff...
It doesn't have a lip.
It doesn't rip them up. But when we replace the concrete, we've also gotta consider how much it costs to replace the concrete. Things have been in place for two years.
Two years and they're in a bunch of...
And we've got two of them that have to be replaced right now. So, you know, do, do we wanna spend the money on replacing those concrete slabs at the same time? And then putting in the $10 apiece cheaper? It's all they are. Or do we just continue to do with the retrofit?
So do they kinda, do the retrofits, like we don't, what's there would stay there? And then these just...
No, you take up what you've got.
Oh, okay.
And then stick these where those are at. And glue them and screw them in.
Dan, is that something that Art Brooks could do?
Yeah, yeah, Doug can do those. Now, we can't, he's not gonna do the concrete work. We have to hire Mason Brothers to, or somebody to do that.
So the two options, and the cost for each option and the advantage to each option in summary. The retrofit doesn't require concrete removal, but it's $165.
$175.
$175.
$10 apiece more.
Okay.
But that doesn't include the cost of the concrete, right?
Those are, those are the retrofit.
They don't require the...
You don't have to have the concrete replaced.
Oh.
The $165 does have to have the concrete replaced. Which I'm gonna say, you know, you're gonna have a couple hundred dollars at least in something like that.
Completely, and construction.
How many are removed?
Well, we said we'd get 12 because we'd have them ahead to replace them if we needed them.
And we have to replace two of them right now?
We have two of them. You know, they're there, but they're in pretty poor shape. They're ripped.
How many do we have in total? Do you know?
I didn't count.
It would be at every intersection or crossing, right? Right.
So currently, we have the cast-in-place?
No.
They don't look to me like they're cast-in-place. They look like they're the retrofits.
The retro, so currently, we have retrofit and we've already lost two of them.
Yeah.
In two years.
In two years. Are they saying about the longevity of the cast-in-place is, is a lot greater?
They say it's, they say it's better, but they don't guarantee it's better. Because it depends on what, where, if somebody catches them with plow or, you know, or snow blower or whatever.
Did we, when we were, like, planning the streetscape, did we, I don't even remember having that conversation about that? Yeah.
We didn't know about this.
Right.
I didn't know about it.
Right.
Nobody ever presented it as an option.
Okay. Larry? So, what do you propose?
I, I would continue with what we've got.
With the retrofit?
Because, because of the concrete expense.
Yeah, you can get a couple of those for the cost of the concrete.
Right.
Oh, yeah, you can get 12 of them for across a one path.
Okay.
So the, the retrofit would be $2,100. And he was guessing the freight on it would be $190.
$190. And that was for 12, correct?
Pardon?
That was for 12?
That's for 12, yes.
Okay.
So we, and he put tax on this because he didn't have our license, so...
Oh, okay, so maybe a little less?
Yeah, it's gonna be, well, $11.40.
Hey, every little bit helps.
Yeah, a little bit, but... So basically, you're gonna take off, uh, he had $42.81. And we're gonna take, so it'd be 226140. If I'm doing my math on my head right.
I'm impressed.
And sure, Sue's gonna check this.
Yes. Sue will check it.
Do we have enough money?
Yeah, we have, we have the money in that loan, in the loan yet. That's why we're trying to do it now.
Today.
Now, Keith is with the USDA, correct? And when you were talking about the electrical, when you made the statement that he would accept estimates. Will he, at this point, will he, um, accept invoices paid or not paid?
Yes.
And/or estimates for anything?
I believe that to be the case.
Cause, yeah.
Well, we got other stuff to talk about, yes.
Oh, do we want, do you wanna make a motion, um, that piece of it?
I'll make a motion that we stick with the retrofit at $175 apiece for Doug.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Think we got discussion taken care of? Okay, motion carries. Okay, then what else you got?
Okay, oh shoot, didn't I mean that? I'm gonna do, oh, there it is.
Sue did explain to him that we have estimates, but when they actually do the work...
It might be a...
It might be, you know, it might be $4 off. It might be a couple hundred dollars off. But she wanted to make sure that the estimates were in there. And he said that that was fine, that he'd accept them. So we need, we just need to get them to him, obviously.
And August 1st is the deadline, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then on the, I'm gonna go to this one first. This, this for the directional wayfinding signs?
Yep.
Those are $1,235 apiece. I didn't know, we didn't discuss on how many we wanted to do. We just had the one picture of Devoe Beach.
Right.
Do we want any more than just the one?
Well, we had talked about Green Docks too. Like having one maybe on 27...
Green Docks and, and the park.
Marina Park.
Marina Park. That was the other two that I was thinking about.
You have one for the boat launch already though, right?
What's that?
You have one for the boat launch up already, right?
Uh, I don't, we didn't put one up.
I don't think we put it up.
I thought I saw that.
I mean, that was, would be another possibility, but it's, it would have to go, I mean, we'd probably put it out on, um, my $175 there. But I don't know.
And they, they would be $1,235 each, correct?
$1,235 each.
Okay. I know when we had had discussions about having wayfinding signs, we obviously had Devoe Beach, Marina Park, and Green Docks. Am I forgetting any other places that we had talked about before?
I don't think so.
I just remember thinking those were the three. Do you know of any? And as far as Devoe Beach goes, would we need a few of them? Like kind of, like pointing the way?
You know, if you put one there, then you need one down there.
Right.
And then you need one to one there.
Right.
So that's three.
Three.
There are a few existing. They're just...
The public beach signs up for you.
Yeah, they're kind of a generic, like highway signs.
The only thing I wonder about is can we get permission to put signs up on the side like that? Permanent signs on the side of the road from the County Road Commission. I know we can for the main street.
The main street.
But, you know, that's really out of our...
Right, it's not in the DDA district.
Right. So I don't know if we can do that.
So that makes me think more that if we have one on 27 pointing in, then people would have to rely on the ones that are currently there. But at least it would get people off 27 and headed in the right direction rather than just driving around. And then Green Docks, kinda same thing. It would be on...
If you think they need to be replaced, I can work with the Road Commission. We'll just take it out of the roads and bridges budget.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And if we have the funds to make a nice wayfinding sign...
Just worry about the DDA.
In our district.
If you want the others replaced, let me know.
Okay, yeah. Maybe they can kind of happen at the same time.
Take a drive. They look pretty good to me.
Maybe just three.
No, we need, one for Devoe.
Yep. One for Marina Park.
One for Marina Park, one for Green Dot.
Okay.
So that's three.
Okay. And they'd all be on this road?
Yes.
$3,705.
The only other place we could put, is like I said, that we could put is for the Marina, or the boat launch. But there's already signs up there for that.
Agreed.
What, what do this, what do these look like, do you know?
I had a picture of them and I didn't, I had it before and I didn't bring it this time.
They did, they look similar to our, like our street signs. They're all, they're the same.
With the, um...
Color palette.
Color palette.
And the logo on the top and...
And that's the post and everything?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's not mounting them. I guess not putting them in the ground, but...
But we have the funds to do so with. And we had talked about that a long time ago about, I mean, we talked about it before we even had the streetscape done. And once we get people here, we need to be able to direct them to the proper places.
And as far as the, as far as the mounting up and stuff like that goes. Doug seemed to think he could do them. If he can't, I don't think they're gonna be that expensive. That could come out of our regular budgets thing. But the $1,235 apiece, you know, that's, if we can put it on the streetscape thing, that's a better place to put it.
If Doug can't do it, I'm sure we could get the Road Commission to do it.
Yeah, I mean, somebody, they put street signs up all the time, so...
It's actually been in the DDA plan for years and years and years.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'd entertain a motion. Somebody would like to make it?
I'll make a motion that we buy three wayfinding, uh, posts and hardware.
And signs.
For $1,235 apiece. I didn't do the math on three of them.
$3,705.
$3,705.
Maybe. It's my math.
For Devoe, Green Box, Green Ducks, and Marina Park. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Conversation, motion carries, okay?
Okay, then we have, uh, Hill's, same company, Hill Mountain Sign Works. For the, um, replacement 12-inch by 4-inch aluminum street sign posts. 12-inch, 12-foot fluided aluminum post, case, cast aluminum base, 30-inch stop signs. Cross bracket and stop sign hardware, custom colored powder coat, same as what we've got now. Four street sign blades, high-intensity reflective, and two 30-inch high-intensity reflective stop signs. And that comes to a total of $4,876.
Okay, and where do these, where are these gonna go? Are they replacements?
The replacements in case we have something broken.
Okay.
We just decided that we, I mean, we talked about it. Thought it'd be a good idea to have them. And Doug said he has a place he can store them. So, you know, some, a sign breaks off.
Right.
We gotta replace them. We don't have to wait for a year like we did on the old signs to get a replacement.
We did have that problem for quite a long time.
Yeah.
Like up at Pankers, I think. Okay.
What was the total on that again, Dan?
$4,876.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain another motion. There's spending money left and right today.
Yeah, that's what we're here for.
It's our last chance.
It is, I know. Next week, it's gonna be a different story.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for $4,876 for...
I'll make that motion.
The list that he gave us?
I, yes, we'll need the list.
We'll need the list. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, last item.
You're costing us some money today, boy.
There's a couple more items. The concrete work estimate for doing the, where the consumers is gonna come in, cut the sidewalks.
Is that what this one was?
Put the vaults, that's what this is.
Okay, and Sue sent me this one earlier today.
Put the vaults in, has to be reconcreted around. We had a couple spots that the curve is broken. He's, he's going to do those, um, around the drains. There's, there's one spot right down here, it's really bad. And if, if he's here, we might as well have him do it at the same time instead of getting it back in again.
Right.
So that, he estimated for up to $10,000. And that is complete estimate because we don't know where we're, how much we're gonna have to cut or anything like that. So, he said that's just his best guess to me.
Okay. All right. Is there any other discussion on this or would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pay Mason Brothers Concrete Construction $10,000 for his concrete repair work.
Can you have a copy of this, right?
I do not. Nope, this do not.
Nope, you can have that one. Um, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seriously? How much will we spend so far, Dan?
My math doesn't go this high.
Okay, so the last thing on the streetscape is the electrical changing over from underground, or overhead to underground. I talked to Doug BB today. He's already bought his meter bases because he said they're on short supply right now, so he's already ahead of it.
Okay.
Everybody else has got me their invoices, estimate invoices. We've got $24.74, $71 for, do we wanna do these all at once, one item? Or do we want individual? I got four different companies.
Yeah, we probably should do them each individual.
Okay, so...
We can, we can approve all of them at once, but...
Oh, that's what I'm saying. I'm gonna go through, if we can just approve them all as one.
Yeah.
Okay. So Tanner's is $24.74, $71.
Where's that for?
That one is for, um, Drosts. BB is $10,650. And he's got, just a second.
Say it again. $10,650?
He's got Kristen's Place.
Rock Country? I think that's Rock Country or whatever. Dick Kristen?
Right next to, right next to Mike and Dave's old barber shop.
I can't think of the name of his business.
Primarica. It used to be Primarica.
Yep.
So what do you have, any prep for the meeting minutes? What is it?
How much is it?
Primarica?
No, um, Primarica?
Yeah. Okay.
Then we've got the station, 310. And we've got Scott Swanson's Building.
For, all, all of these are BB?
BB.
Yes, all these are BB's.
Gotcha.
You know, maybe put Chris, Kristen on, um, Primarica. I don't, are they still open there?
No, right now, Ferro Gas is in there, or fuel, fuel gas?
Ferro.
Ferro Gas.
Ferro Gas? Okay, yeah, just put Chris, Kristen.
It's still Kristen's place though.
Yeah. It's, yeah, I think the, I think the building is called Kristen Place.
Oh, is it? Okay. I'll drive by there too and get the correct address. So I got 310, what was the next one?
The next one is Kelly Ashford.
Swanson's.
Those.
Swanson's and then Kelly Ashford.
Yeah.
So four of them there, right?
Yeah, four of them total.
Drosts, Kristen. Okay? And then...
And that total is $10,650. Then we've got Straits Area. And that's Oxley's. That's for... Have I seen it? Come on, where is it? Dan? I said, I said the wrong person. For Tanner's was...
I've got that under Drosts.
Yeah, it's not. I, I, it's, actually Straits Area is Drosts. I'm sorry. And Tanner's is for, um... He didn't put it on here. Now I gotta remember who's it was. 36, 39 South Straits Highway. And you can't remember whose it is?
I'll look it up.
It'd be this way.
PNC?
Nope, they didn't have to have it. Yeah, yeah. No, no, they aren't gonna have to have it because we're going overhead on them from, from underground to a pole in the back.
Workout place, sir?
No, no, they're already underground. And I said Kelly Ashford's already is.
It's not Silverstone?
Oh, it's, um, uh, what was it called? Finders Keepers?
Finders Keeper, yeah, I'm sorry.
What's it called now? Is it Merka and Mercado? Or is it, what is it now?
It's just their house now.
Okay.
And that's, um, Monty Black has owns that now.
So I don't know what to tell you.
So is it residential then or?
No, it's commercial.
Still commercial?
Yeah.
It was Finders Keepers. And then it was Market Mercado.
Uh, and they're still renting it. She's just not, doesn't have a storefront open there now.
I'm just gonna figure it out.
What was that amount, Dan?
That was... Oh, come on, I know what's on here. It's on a separate invoice. Tanner, he put it on $24.74, $71.
So that was what used to be Straits.
Oh, that was, that was the one you gave us for Drosts?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's because I had those.
Okay, so that's for that building?
Drosts, Drosts is $29.31, $98.
Gotcha.
Drosts is 29, what was it?
Say it again.
$29.31, $98 for Drosts.
Gotcha.
$24.74, $71. Mark eight.
Market Mercado.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. The last one is for Pollard's. This one is $12,455.55.
Oh, sorry, Lori.
What was that again?
Because we have to, because of, they had two services in there.
Is that white pine on that, Dan?
That is white pine, yes. And then they, because the consumers doesn't want to have two meter bases in there. We're going all to one meter base. So all the electrical has to be changed. Not all the electrical, but the main panels have to be changed inside. So it's quite, it's gonna...
We did try to get Doug BB and someone else.
We got two other people to give estimates and they won't even touch it.
Oh. Sorry again.
So I had to look at them like... At the end of the day, how many poles will we lose as a result of this?
All the poles, all the electrical poles on that side except, um, no, because the one by, um, the workout place is staying back farther, so it's coming from this side to there. I think it's going to eliminate everything but this up here.
Nice.
We are going to eliminate the pole at the, um, Peyton Memorial. We've got that figured out, so that one's going out.
Nice.
It's gonna clean that side up really, really good.
Thank you so much for putting all this work into it.
Yeah.
I know it's been, your big headache and pain in the neck, but thank you very much.
It seems like you go four steps backwards to get one step forward.
I know. Cause it feels like we're kind of...
Well, we are, we are. I did, I also, well, we need to get a motion on that before I continue.
Okay, do we have, do we know what the total amount was? Or did we want to...
$1,512.26.
Could you say that again, Bob?
I had a $28.512.26. But I'll check it again.
That's the electric and the concrete? Or did we already do the concrete?
That's not the concrete.
The concrete, we just, we did the concrete, right? We just made a motion for that one. Yeah, we did, we did. Okay.
Yep, we're off that. I'll do a motion to pay, to approve payment of these invoices.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second up.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Good job.
Okay, then the other thing, we, maybe you know, did, did they cash our check? Cause I tried to call him again. He said that he was going to check on it and get back to me. And I tried to call him again today. And that was on Wednesday. No, we had a meeting on Monday. It was on Tuesday. And I was out of town on, after Wednesday. So, um, I tried to call him again today and he did not return. But he did tell the elect, um...
Do you have any idea?
BB, he did tell BB that it's still moving forward. Because he talked to him about the meter bases and stuff.
Okay. All right, well, we'll check on that tomorrow morning.
It'd be just, you know...
And how much was that?
$141,000 and something.
That's a big number.
So, that's all I have.
Wow.
That's all?
That's it? How much money did we just spend?
The Dan meeting.
Well, thank you, that's awesome. Sturgeon, we, I didn't print out a bunch of these. I actually thought I did and I printed out like a bunch of things that we didn't need. But, um, Don, did you wanna talk to this or speak to this? This is about the, the discussion of what well type. There were two choices for a well type to support the drinking fountain usage.
They're burrowed.
Would you like, I printed it out really big if you'd like to look at it. Sorry, I could've walked it over two years.
Okay. Oh, it's nice and big.
Yep, I printed it big.
Okay, so Mike Kavanaugh sent this to me. Mike works for, used to be District Health Corps Inspector for forty years. And now he works for Ramsby. Wow, so he'll be helping me fill out the application that you're filling out.
Awesome, yep.
So basically, he sent this, non-community water supplies. What it includes, it's water that serves the public, to employees or to members of a facility that are not community supplies. I don't know what that means. These supplies include those serving restaurants, schools, offices, stores, general small businesses, motels, hotels, industrial operations, et cetera. Non-community water supplies are divided into two... Non-community water supplies are divided into two main categories under Act three ninety-nine, based on the number of individuals served. So this is where we get into the twenty-five per day, um, individuals per day, uh, for any sixty days in a year, those are classified as type two. So if we think twenty-five people or twenty-five people and their dogs are gonna drink from a water fountain there, you'd want a type two. And, um, the other is that fewer than twenty-five are classified as type three. So, um, it, it doesn't matter which one you, we go with. Ultimately, Kyle Keller is gonna look at the traffic flow there and he's gonna determine...
With the health department, right?
Yep. But if he said, we only need a type three and you guys think there's gonna be more in the future, the construction doesn't matter, it's the same construction, uh, for the well.
Is it just for the testing?
It's just for the testing.
So if we, if they said that we would have to go to a type three, we'd have to get it tested four times a year instead of once?
Once a year, yeah.
No, that's type two, right? If you go to a type two.
Type two is the twenty-five or more.
Okay.
Yeah, so though, that would require more stringent testing, correct?
Yep.
And that's the four times a year?
Yep. So, and I don't, I did not ask, um, Doug, but I wanna say it isn't, it's like forty-five or fifty dollars per?
Per.
Yeah, so you're talking a couple hundred dollars if you want with it.
Yeah, which isn't, I mean, you saw what we just spent, so.
It just makes sense to me to do a type two.
Well, I, I agree. I have a question about this, where it mentions non-community water supplies would include wells that serve water to the public, to employees or members of a facility, and are not community supplies. So, if it's serving some, like if it's, I mean, we're not a restaurant, a school, an office, a store, general small business, motel, hotel, industrial operations, or a public swimming pool facility, does the sturgeon itself count as something, some sort of facility, so that it wouldn't be considered community supply?
I would say that it probably does, because you have, um, I mean, there, there has been the picture-taking.
Or an attraction.
Yeah, it's an attraction.
Yeah, I would say community attraction.
Okay, I just wanna double check on that.
I, I think, I think so, yeah.
They had to get, get it tested for, four times a year.
And he said that they just did one, uh, top of the...
That's what I'm just gonna do, what constitutes a community water supply.
Yeah.
Right.
Chances are it's gonna be a type two.
And that kinda covers everything. If we do the type two, then we'll have the proper testing, no matter how many people drink from it.
Yeah.
And dogs.
Unless something happens, we don't put a water fountain in. Right now, the Department has promised to...
Right, and it kinda makes sense to do it correctly the first time.
Yeah, set it up for growth.
Is there any other discussion about this with someone? Are you thinking?
Yeah, he's, he's real quick, just...
We, we were just wondering, what, this is a non-community, well, what would constitute a community water supply, right?
It's me, that's the question that I...
I'm wondering if it's like a community center, or a, like a school, or like something that has...
Well, because schools would count municipal water supply, maybe.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. I've never seen a, or a drinking fountain that hasn't needed to be tested.
Yeah, they all have to be tested.
Well, it would be, it's just...
Well, it would still lead to...
Yeah.
Yeah, it would just be taken tight.
That's just the standard, I think.
Well, I don't know, Don's correct that Keller's gonna make the decision.
Right.
Yeah.
Did that matter while we decided?
Well, if you say you want the type two, he'll give us a type, he'll tell us we can have the type two. We can say the type two is probably what we need. I personally think...
And I think it's our responsibility to test it to make sure that it's safe for everybody.
Let's be correct out the gate, not have to worry about it down the road.
Right, we don't need to worry about anything else.
I, I do have one other question about, we're probably gonna drain this in the winter. How do we test the water in the off-montains? I mean, I guess...
Well, I mean, they have to, they have to have an answer because top and a B would be the same way. Unless it's an artesian wall that's constantly running, but...
It's still, it's a sixty-day period, so...
Right.
It's in any, more than twenty-five in, in a day, in any sixty days.
Okay, so then we're gonna be over that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'd be good. Is there any other discussion?
'Cause I, I know that, uh, Doug said he's gonna be talking when they're putting the well in to make sure that it's...
Like we have it very correctly, right? So that we can drain it and then in the springtime just put it back in.
By the sturgeon, I, I don't know where they're...
Oh, I'm sorry, I probably should have, uh, I don't think I have the, did Sue send you the, um, that Brian did the survey?
Oh.
So there's a ten, what he surveyed was a ten by twenty-five, um, spot easement, and it is from the sidewalk on twenty-seven, behind the sturgeon.
Okay.
So ten by twenty-five foot, and that's where they're gonna, that's where they're gonna put it. It, that meets all the setbacks.
And then it'll be out of the waste and nobody needs to worry about hitting it with anything?
When I talked to Mike, I asked, can you like put it as close to the sidewalk as possible, so that, you know, they can, if you're gonna do a drinking fountain, you don't put a water far?
Right.
So they're gonna be looking at all of that.
What about like, uh, is there a pressure tank there or any other equipment? Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a underground.
Are you gonna use it for, um, watering as well?
Would there be a spickage here?
Irrigation.
Yep, we'll have to figure out the irrigation piece of it.
Right.
That, that'd be it.
Step at a time.
So when do we think this would happen? Still this year or in the spring?
So Sue, I don't know that she's gotten the survey over to Kurska, is it Kurska, that's the lawyer? So that you can write the label and get it to, um, Mr. Pulte.
Okay.
She got that approved at the last meeting, and so, but everybody's been busy, a lot going on, so.
Right. Okay, I'll check with her about that and see where we are with that, but by the, by our next meeting, we should have an answer with that.
I would say, if, I don't know how long that process is gonna take, but I would say before fall, I, that's my goal. We've been really lucky, we've had a, a lot of rain in the summer, so...
Yeah.
It's gotten water.
That'll actually be really good, because if the spring, we can start right out of the gate with watering and everything, that'd be really good. Well, thank you for doing all the hard work on this. Do we have a motion for, uh, would somebody like to make a motion?
It's the class two, right?
Type two.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we, uh, apply for a class two well for the sturgeon.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good job. All right. Okay, cleaning of sidewalks, Tyler, this is all you.
Yeah, so I called a few times last week, the general mailbox, OHM, didn't get a call back. Um, I got a number from Bob for a guy, like the direct line. Um, he's on the road, so he didn't give me an exact, uh, square footage on the sidewalks, but it looks like it's gonna be somewhere right around forty-two thousand square feet, give or take, one or two, depending on when firm numbers come in.
Okay.
So total on that, going right in the middle of like national average pricing for it, would be around thirty-one thousand dollars if we were to hire out all portions of it. But I was thinking about it, and if we were to see if Doug or some of his guys were able to go in for the two nights following cleaning and like spray the sealer themselves, that would probably save around anywhere from like four to six thousand dollars off the cost of paying someone else to do it.
Have you approached Doug about it or anything?
I haven't yet, I, I just got a call, returned call from the guy that I called, I can't remember what his name was.
Ed Garo.
Ben, yep. Um, around like four o'clock or so, so...
He worked on the streets.
Okay. So if we were to talk to Doug about that, that would be, uh, if his guys have avail, I don't know what their rules are for working nights or if they wanna work nights or not, but even if they're on overtime, it'd probably be cheaper, well, it, it would be cheaper having them do it than hiring out.
Would this be something that they would be able to do if we could pay for it? From a township standpoint?
I don't know why not. I mean, technically, they're under parks, but they're a shared resource. I, I think the question is, does Doug have time to do it?
Right.
Yeah.
He's a busy, busy, busy guy.
Doug will do about anything, yeah. He's pretty crazy.
He's awesome, he is.
There's nothing in, uh, there's no chemicals in it that would prohibit our people from doing it, is there?
Uh, the sealer, um, I mean, you just wear your gloves and a mask while you're doing it, I mean, probably goggles too, just to be safe, but it's not a... Yeah, no, it's not going all, the sealer's expensive, you don't wanna go in all over. I mean, it's a pretty controlled cone spray application.
And what was your estimate, um, of, um, if Doug was able to do it, the reduction of the thirty-one thousand?
I'm gonna guess anywhere between probably four to six, I'll have to wait to get exact firm numbers on it.
Just call it five.
Real, yeah, yeah, you'd call it like five thousand. And depending on how many guys he has, but I mean, there's, uh, just around like a half a mile or so on either side that you gotta go down the width of it, so I mean, it takes, it's just a lot of walking and pumping.
So is it actually like a pumper?
Pump sprayers, yeah, yeah, you're better off using those than like a backpack sprayer, just because if, backpack sprayers are prone to get leaks in them, and if that leaks and starts going down your back or just spilling everywhere, that's just...
Right.
That's not fun.
Oh my gosh, that doesn't sound like fun walking.
And you can't use like a big electric pump sprayer on it, just 'cause then you get overspray and waste, yeah. So, walking up and down the sidewalks for probably, if you have two guys, probably two nights, maybe two and a half nights of walk around with some headlamps and, yeah.
I used six to take it down to twenty-five, 'cause my math brain needed to do that. So, the twenty-five thousand, is that for just the streetscape sidewalk, or is that for all the sidewalks?
So that went from, from the sidewalks from just north of the bridge on the west side, down to the four-way stop, and then the other side, the same, the same distance, but that side has more wider sidewalk areas, and then it opens up over by the...
And that's the sidewalk and the brick pavers?
Uh, the brick paver, the brick pavers are separate, they were, what were they, around seventeen or eighteen thousand square feet for the red pavers? This, just the sidewalk was around forty-two thousand square feet.
So this isn't the red brick?
No.
What was our total on the red?
I do not remember offhand.
Did we approve that for the red brick?
I think we already bought the sealer for it, yep, yeah.
Yeah, we already bought it.
Okay, all right.
So this is an additional...
And what was the sealer around? I think the sealer was around forty-three hundred?
Okay, so this is in addition to that, okay, I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, yep, yep. And this was something we just talked about checking and seeing what the prices or the feasibility of it would even, would even be, that's a...
You, you said that you use national averages, is that, was that a national average number?
Yeah, so it could go anywhere from twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine thousand up to like thirty-six, so... If we wanna get an actual firm estimate on it, I would wanna wait until we know the for sure square footage, and then call the supplier and galley to get the exact cost on it.
There was a question, Jen. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm new to the Parks Commission, and I have a question. When you guys say Doug can do this, do you guys pay Parks back for his time that...
That's what I was thinking.
We, we haven't.
Unless we probably would.
Doug is only one person, he gets stretched like a rubber band.
He completely does.
And I, I wanna watch out for Doug.
We, we have talked about that before.
And not being abused, or not taking our funds...
Right, right, no, I get it.
To do your, and I wanna work together, Don, you know, but I don't want our funds to be depleted without Doug doing this, that, and everything else.
No, I completely agree with that.
Thank you.
So, would this be, if we didn't pay Doug, it would be four to six thousand? Or if we paid Doug?
It would save, if, if, if he was paid to do it, it'd save probably around five thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what I understood, so if we paid him to do it.
Well, we might give you a discount, I mean...
So...
Yeah.
So what, what are you saying back?
But you know what I'm saying, so many people use Doug to pay Parks.
I get it.
No, I completely get it, he helped us with lobster fest last week.
What about, well, we put this out to bid to know whether the national average is gonna be reflective of, um, area resources and people, is that's what we would do? So this is just a guesstimate?
It's, it's a pretty close...
Yeah, and we don't have square footage, and we haven't entered into bids to know just how close it is, but it's...
He said he could get back with me later this week with the for sure, exact square footage on it, yeah. He said it was split up under a couple different categories, um, so it would just take him a little while to pull it all up, I guess.
A couple years ago, I called him for the same thing, but I went back and tried to find that number and I just couldn't find it for you, I'm sorry.
It'd be good enough for the future.
Yeah.
You know, if it's in our minutes, then...
We talked about it, probably, yeah.
And I do know a couple of guys down, from Dallas, 'cause a lot of companies that, if they do things like this, they're outfitted for it, they'll have anywhere from five hundred to a thousand gallon buffer tank on their trailer, and they're, they're outfitted specifically for this. So if we wanna get bids on it, we definitely need to look...
Further than down the street?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Well, it doesn't sound like we want to make a decision on anything, so we don't have anything, um, if you can get more information and then maybe just share it with us through email?
No. Yeah, as soon as I can get the firm numbers on it, yeah.
And then maybe we have a conversation with Doug to see if it's even a viable suggestion.
Yeah, and, does Parks have like a rough per man hour cost for Doug and his crew?
I don't think it's two men, so...
Cause I, I...
It's gonna be in the third, I can tell you it's gonna be...
If you put two men on, even with overtime, for two nights, it's not gonna be five, sixteen.
Oh, it's gonna be way cheaper to have some that's already on.
Definitely cheaper to pay them.
Yep, than hiring it out.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we can have a conversation with Parks and with Doug.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not speaking for Doug, he may say, we'll just do it, but my concern is...
No, I completely get that.
The problem with Doug is he is more than happy to volunteer, he'll come in at night and do something.
Oh, yeah, he'll, he'll do it all.
And that's not fair to him, you know? So, I can contact Doug, I talk to him almost every day.
Okay, we'll just have a conversation, okay, yeah, perfect. Tyler, I'll put it on the agenda for next month, will that work for you?
Yep, yep. Um, and I can at least check with a few contractors throughout the state that do larger municipal projects like this and see if they're even... Most times they're bid out, i- if, if they're set for stuff, they have contracts that are booked out a good bit, but at least see if there's people that'll be even interested in...
So this would be happening when we're doing the brick pavers, it wouldn't be like...
No, it, it doesn't have to be done at the same, same time, no.
Wouldn't it make sense too? I mean, economy of scale, like if we're hiring somebody to do it, it seems like while they're here doing one, if they did both, like...
Cleaning a sidewalk and cleaning the pavers and doing everything.
And most time when people bid stuff like that, it's all just a square footage price, so that you don't, there's, add a certain size, there's not as much of like a bulk discount, I guess. I mean, obviously, it's, it's a bulk, it's a discount in doing larger stuff like this as opposed to doing a sidewalk at a house or a concrete driveway. But once you get to a certain point, it's just whatever the square footage price is, is kind of...
Well, thank you for your...
I, um, I have a question, hopefully it's not repetitive. So we know what, what the sealant does for the red brick pavers, you know, protects the color.
Yep.
Protects the integrity of the cement product itself. Um, what, may I ask, what exactly does the sealant do for a regular concrete sidewalk?
So, probably one of the main things, things that it helps with is since penetrating sealer, if things are spilled on the sidewalk, either if somehow oil gets on there or anything else, it's not going to seep in and leave a permanent stain. It might leave shadows, but it's not gonna be the same effect as raw, bare, concrete.
Does it protect it from salt at all?
It's, it's helpful, um, some people say yes, some people say no.
Or just like a snow blower or a blade going across it?
Oh, it's not gonna save it from like a blade.
You weren't here when we talked about this, because, because when I walked around with Mason Concrete, and we, I asked him, I said, what would you do with this concrete? And, because you know I've been against it.
I know. I could twist your arm about the red.
So, I mean, and, I, I talked to him, and he said, look at, look at what it costs me to have, bring a crew in to redo a section of sidewalk. So is it worth doing that? Absolutely. That's what he told me, and he's a contractor for concrete, I'm not. So that's...
What I, and I was convinced that with the red brick that we used, or the red cement pattern that we used, that it would indeed protect that. I just wasn't sure with regular cement, that has no color, it still does.
It, it still does.
He said, the other thing he said, it will help with, because you're sealing the water out, uh, it'll help with the, with spalling.
Freezing.
He said, it's not gonna stop it, but it will help it.
Slows it down, yep.
So, that's why he changed, he changed my mind.
That's not easy to do.
I couldn't change your mind.
No, no. I just didn't, I thought it was a lot of... No, no. I just didn't, I thought it was a lot of money to spend.
No, I get it, yeah. I understand.
But it is, it is a huge investment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That we've made in the community, so we definitely wanna make sure that.
It's based here for.
Right.
It looks nice for a long time.
Right, yeah.
What were you saying, Bob? Do, do we have the money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do. Okay, um, if there's no other discussion on that, public comment? Anyone, anyone? Yes?
So a couple things. Um, at the last county planning meeting, they're starting to work on the county master plan. Um, they're gonna, they are gonna hire N E B C O G. It looks like they're gonna hire N E B C O G.
Okay.
And there is gonna be a big push for public outreach. They'll probably try to have something here at the school.
Okay.
Um, they had, like they've had in the past, and.
Who's that, who's that N E B C O G now?
Uh, Diane Klein.
Is she still there?
Yeah, she is. I mean, I think she's probably gonna be working on that.
Okay, good.
Um, and they're probably gonna do a similar survey to what we did before, so that's coming up. Um, and then the other thing was, you mentioned about the commercial zoning.
Uh-huh.
So we had a new business, the Centus Park Towne Jeffords. You probably know it, the flags that you see as you go north of town, hiring 401K.
Yeah.
It is a landscaping business.
Tots or something?
And he came in for a request to rezone the back half of his property. So when they did the commercial zoning, it's six hundred feet either side of twenty-seven, all the way down twenty-seven through the county. Some of those lots are split, so there's forest ag on the backside or something. So we looked at, um, he wants to rezone, they're gonna take that to the county commissioners for that. Um, but we looked at that whole block there, so from seventy-five up to learning lane, that's the cut off, to rezone all of it because.
Where the ice company is there and another landscaping?
Yeah, the ice company, the ice company is all zoned, but, um, Chad Stemples, um, landscaping.
Landscaping?
Yeah, he's, he's got, I think, about thirty acres, and half of it is zone commercial, and the back half on seventy-five is forest ag. So we're, we're gonna look to do all of that. They would, they would like some feedback, um, from you guys if you so choose to. Up to you, whether or not, but they're gonna propose that we just that block rezone it, like, um, what is it, um, the boat place?
Indian River Sports Center?
Our, yeah, Indian River Sports Center. Um, they have just like this little tiny slice of pot that's forest ag. Doesn't even make any sense. So, um, because it borders seventy-five, we thought it was pretty safe to look at rezoning all of it, so it's all commercial.
And that way, they would be able to use the property closer to seventy-five to possibly even advertise or.
It opens up some, like there, in forest ag, there are things that you can do in commercial that you can't do in forest ag, that you would need a special use permit. So it does away with those special use permits.
Okay, interesting.
So it just makes sense for what's out there right now.
Any other public comment? Yes.
Um.
We love Doug too. I promise you.
I'll put that in the meeting minutes.
Joe, did any of you guys work on the veterans', I, I don't know if this is appropriate to ask now, the veterans' peer with the blocks are, did any of you guys work?
We didn't, that's actually not in the D D A.
That wasn't in the D D As.
Okay.
It's not in our thing. Who? Gosh, who did?
We maintain them. We're not, we, we just maintain.
I know, but I'm trying to think of.
We just discussed it.
Cause there, there was a committee.
But I think there was a, just a separate veterans' peer group, wasn't it?
Yeah, there was a specific veterans' peer, yeah. And for the life of me, I can't remember.
Does anybody know anybody that was on it?
Mike?
Oh my God, I'm trying to get a hold of him. He's got too much on his plate right now.
Do you guys, do you remember who was on veterans' peer committee? On the veterans' peer committee? Do you guys remember who's part of that?
We were. Dick DeBoer was on it.
I think Dick DeBoer was on it.
There was, there was, and like they had a committee for that, and honest to God, I know I went to the meetings and I can't remember.
Was Jim Burke here?
Yes.
Dennis Burwell.
Oh, Dennis Burwell, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, that's who spearheaded that.
He's down in Galer now.
Yeah. I don't know.
I don't even know where he is.
Dennis and Jayne Burwell? I'd say I have their phone number if somebody was seen.
For who?
Burwell's?
Burwell's?
Started it too.
Yeah, if you need the phone number?
Yeah.
Mike Ridley started it when he was chairman of works.
I think initially, Mike Ridley, when he was on the Parks Commission.
Uh-huh.
Started, you know, the veterans' peer.
Right.
And then money was raised, um, there was grant funding, money was raised from, you know, a number of cultural organizations.
Separately, from that group. Right.
People donated.
Was Sally Snyder part of that? I know she was, like, she and Darryl Fister, they were all Marina Park.
Dennis Burwell was one of the key things, persons that came on and kinda took it over.
The fundraiser.
Okay.
B L P A, um, they donated, but they, um, they gave the final part, so they, the, the community raised X number of dollars.
Who put the pavilion there?
Put them over the top.
Okay, because the pavilion was, that was part of.
And there was matching, that was a donation from someone.
Consumers Energy, a lot of corporate, you know, people donated.
Yeah.
Yeah. I forget about, yeah. I forget about that too. Okay.
You got lots.
Does that help at all?
Clear as water, listen to the tape. If you give me the one number you have, that would be great.
I think the names and stuff are all on that big plaque that's down there, so.
Right, oh, okay.
Oh, they should be.
What's that?
There was a plaque that was dedicated down there, yeah. So maybe you just pop down there and look at it.
Sorry, Katie.
No, no, that's fine. Is there any other, um, public comment? Okay, any board comment?
Um.
You again?
Do we, do we, um, want to order these signs?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is just for, I'll have to get a contract for the weight finding. Do we want to have him? I can pull that picture up of DeBeau Beach. Do we want to have him give us samples of DeBeau Beach?
Green dock?
Green dock and.
Marina Park, yeah.
And, and then I can bring it to the next meeting, cause he said he would op, we could operate off these estimates.
But we're gonna have to, yeah, we're gonna have to do something to submit it before August first.
Well, yeah.
So because for the contract, the contract.
I'll have the, I'll have quotes.
Okay.
If you sign those.
Okay, I will be happy to do that.
Okay, I'll, I'll take care of that tomorrow then.
Okay. Nope, perfect. Any other board comment?
Yeah, we got the, finally got the lines painted.
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, there was people on the summer store side of the store, and every spot was taken, where no one's parked there all summer, cause they didn't even know it was parking.
That's good, and there are a lot of.
Yeah, it makes such a big difference.
We need to do that every couple of years.
You know, I pulled out of the summer store one day last week and probably had to wait four or five minutes, like, and I'm not even exaggerating. I was like, "Oh my gosh, there's so many people," and it was, it was after.
I often don't take a left turn because I can't. I just go right and then go right on the left.
Yeah, seriously, but it wasn't even like Fourth of July week.
You gotta turn right, go over the expressway, turn right.
Turn right, come back. You know.
And I love it.
It's a good problem to have, because that means people are getting off of seventy-five and coming into town, which, you know, they say if you build it, they will come. Maybe it's like heaven now. It's good.